We have to have engineers come in and look at it before anything gets done. You did or you have to?
We have to.
I thought that's why it got moved back a little bit because they had to have all this engineering stuff. Yes?
Well, you have to engineer it for a little bit. That one is a particular challenge, I would guess, because it is a very low spot for the already.
I thought that's why it got put.
But I wouldn't want us to not prioritize it because it's difficult.
No.
That's it.
I understand. I think it got moved. I have no idea what's going on there.
Okay, third and final call for public hearing discussion. In the motion to close the hearing.
Motion for my public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Brian.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Motion carries number 19, discussion, action, resolution number 621, one and six year street plan.
And recognizing your motion, you can make any modifications to this you want. If you want to move Lincoln back to one year, that could be part of the motion. Or whatever.
I think I'll make a motion to move Lincoln back to the one year.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I need to keep everything else, right?
Then everything else is the same.
Well, you could make it all in one. If you want to get it done, move Lincoln back to one year and pass the resolution.
That's what I want to do. I'll make a motion to move Lincoln back to one year and pass resolution 621. Okay.
It's okay. Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, real quickly. Number six, discussion, action, election, elect president of council. Traditionally, it's the most senior member, which is currently Bob. That's not always been the case, but that's the majority of the time in the history. But it's up to the four of you to elect one of your peers to be president.
I know what Bob's supposed to be president of the council.
Okay, you have a second.
Second, Pat.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Third and final call. Okay, any further discussion? Voting, Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Congrats.
Thanks for your thorough talking.
Number seven, discussion, action, personnel committee appointment. Traditionally, that is the second most highest senior person, and since Julie is no longer here, that would be Pam. That would be my nomination, but it's up to you four to vote to approve that.
I nominate Pam for the personnel committee appointment.
Okay. Second, Pat. Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Is Kevin on Zoom?
Let me call Kevin quick.
Okay.
He's at one minute, right?
It's 7:15 right now. Public hearing, LB840, six-month report. Kevin Lincoln.
Hey, Kevin, can you jump on Zoom? It's time for that LB840 public hearing. He said he wasn't aware he was supposed to.
Can you put him on speaker?
You can do it. I'll do it. I'll do it for you guys. It's fine. No worries. Um, I don't know. Where's the link?
It's on the Facebook page.
On the Facebook page, the City Facebook page? No, that's okay. No worries. I'll just do it for you guys real quick. It's fine. It's okay. He's trying to log on. He said he didn't know. No, it's okay. No worries. Okay. Just logging in. It's on the City of Plainview Facebook page. Or, you know what, you just want me to put you on speakerphone. You want to do it that way? No. Okay, I'll help you fill in the gaps. I'll put you on speakerphone. Okay. All right, Kevin, you're on speakerphone.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Kevin.
Sorry, I'm late. So I guess, you know, the last six months, you know, some of the things we've done, we've started that, or, you know, that's an issue that wouldn't influence, you know, our downtown revitalization. You know, we're working on, I think we did, I missed such much, with the science for dance right. Susan, you can maybe help me with that. She applied for that. So we did this, our scientist program. We're currently working on something with, you know, Mary's Restaurant.
Workforce housing.
How much is that?
You're part of the workforce housing. You put up the match for that.
We did do that. How much was that again?
Thirty-five thousand.
Yeah. So that's complete proceeding, right?
Yeah, it is. We actually got our scoring application back from the state on our grant and to see how and why we got it. And actually, us matching $35,000 of LB840 to our application gave us 35 extra points that no other community got, and that is actually what bumped us over other communities. So the collaboration of LB840 was really vital to that project being successful.
Yeah, great. Great.
You've done the loan for Brandon Myers?
Correct. Yeah, that would have been in the last six months. If they helped him acquire the, you know, the Plainview 24-hour business. It seems like that's kind of been the most of it. There was a few months there. We didn't have a ton going on, but it seems like things are picking up now with everything. So it was, you know, it was a busy six months in its own right, but I think things will really start picking up. You know, the next six months when we start to, you know, take, we'll definitely start taking some things for the downtown revitalization, that kind of thing. So there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of stuff to kind of, to meet with and talk about in 2021.
Yeah, and I just want to say thanks to our LB840 committee. I asked a lot of them. They do have to meet a lot. They were troopers during the downtown revitalization planning process with Confluence. That was a lot of information. There was an in-person meeting, lots of emails back and forth, but they've done a lot. And, you know, doing all these business loans, sometimes it gets difficult. You know, some of the restrictions or conditions they put on those, and they do a great job on that. So I appreciate them for what they do, and I also that they wear that additional hat of CDA and DTR committee. So thank you, Kevin.
Well, thank you, Susan, for kind of keeping us in the loop on every day and you know, letting us know what's going on and making sure we're meeting and getting everything organized. That's very good. It's a good group. Sometimes it can be tough to find a meeting time that works for everybody, but we seem to always stay together and make it work. So appreciate the council's support, too.
Yep. Thank you, Kevin.
Does anybody from the public have any questions for Kevin? Does anybody from the council have any questions for Kevin?
That mini-book I write you every month is enough?
Yes.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, Kevin, thank you so much. Sorry to put you on the spot. Appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Okay, motion to come out of public hearing?
Make a motion to come out of public hearing?
Second. All in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Number 21, discussion, action, LB840.
Wait, we gotta go back.
What?
Number eight.
Oh, we go back. Okay, all right. Number eight, discussion, action, employee health insurance renewal. Josh here, Town and Country. Thank you for coming up here.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Very welcome.
Does everybody have one of these in front of them?
Yeah.
I'll take one of these.
I'm gonna have to share with you a little bit.
Okay, that's nice.
Do you have any extra over there?
We can share.
Okay. Not a lot to report this year. It was actually a really good renewal. I was able, we were able to get it down to, here, go, grab it. Got it down to a 2% rate increase, so well under what we were projecting. Couple different things went into that. We had some demographic changes on the group, and actually, surprisingly, COVID has had a lot to do with actually decreasing the rates because nobody's been going in for anything. It's all just been COVID, COVID, COVID. So those are kind of the two big things impacting it. So with the very small rate increase for this year, not recommending any changes to the plan. Still keeping the same deductible, 3,000 for individuals, 6,000 for family, 100% coinsurance after that. Aetna is still the network, so really no major changes. One thing to point out, you did have a recent addition. Chris came onto the plan as of December 1st. That is, he is not represented on these rates, so the actual premium, once he comes on, is a little over 8,400.
And it will change also if the officer comes on in a few months.
Correct. And it's what's called composite rates, so we already know what the rate is ahead of time. It's not based on the age of whoever would be hired. It's based off of if they're employee only or employee spouse or family. And those rates are also showing in the packet there.
Okay.
So any questions on the renewal?
Quick, for these guys, does anybody have any issues? I mean, pretty small increase, they shouldn't.
No.
I'll be in office, too.
No, we had to experience some pharmacy benefit issues, and those have seemed to go by the wayside now with some changes at the pharmacy.
Can I ask you a question? Are you still calling yourself Town and Country even though you were bought out by a lot of other people?
So, well, I'm in even more complicated situation than that. So I am technically Town and Country Wealth Management. I am my own entity, but I still, in my office appears. Yes, technically, the new designation for Town and Country Insurance is Town and Country Insurance, a division of GTA. So after the merger, they had to add the, yeah, so there's still Town and Country Insurance. Any other questions? With that, I don't have anything else on the group health, but I do have something that I am asking all of my groups if they would like to add at the renewal time. Over the years, coverage for ground and especially air ambulance has gotten worse and worse. If anybody watches any of the mainstream media, Dateline, whatever, you've probably seen some shows on balance billing. Someone who had to take a helicopter ride and ended up getting billed for thousands and thousands of dollars. Years ago, it used to be that you still had a decent chance of most of those being covered by your insurance. But recently, pretty much all of the carriers have come out of network. So no matter if you're Blue Cross, UHC, doesn't matter, most likely, they are choosing to not be in anyone's network. And in Northeast Nebraska, unfortunately, there's actually like four or five different air ambulance companies that could potentially be sent. It depends on who's available, exactly where you're at. There's a lot of factors that go into it. And there was no really good way to cover that gap other than buying an individual membership from each of those flight companies. So, but now, a new company has come into Nebraska, and they are offering a product that will cover you for any air or ground ambulance. No matter the carrier, they're going to pay to help fill in any gaps. That might be what's called balance bill. It's $14 per person per month to fill that gap. I know I personally know at least one or two people who have had to take flights in those helicopters, and those bills, like I said, can be upwards of 20, 40, 50, 60, 70,000 dollars sometimes. So this is a really great plan to fill that gap, even though the chances are very small. If it does happen to you, most likely, it could completely wreck you financially. So I think it's a really good inexpensive product that I'm offering to all my groups, and I would highly recommend for just $14 a month per member that you would add it on.
And that would be at the city's cost or the employer, both, split?
It'd be both.
Both, okay.
I mean, it would be up to the city. The city could choose to do the full $14 a month. You could choose to do, I guess, a split, how you're doing the current premium for each employee. That would be totally up to the city.
So this pays what the insurance doesn't pay? Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. So, you know, if you look back at the group health, you know, I have highlighted, when you look at the benefits on this third page here, I have the in-network benefits highlighted. Like I said, most of the companies, the flight companies, are out of network. So you're looking at a minimum of, you know, an out-of-pocket max of $25,000. So there's a potential that at a minimum, you're going to owe $25,000.
I think that should be an individual choice of the employee and not our responsibility. It's just like if you want, I, you gotta pay for that yourself in some places and.
Unfortunately, if you do it individually, then it's $39 a month versus 14 if it's provided by the employer. So you can do that. It's just more expensive. They don't have the $14 option that they do for groups.
But I say, say, for example, if we choose the $14, or $14, and we choose to pay half, does the employee have to pay half and sign up for it? Is it all or nothing, or piecemeal, or?
Yeah, if you're instituting it, you're instituting it for a group. So everybody would then. If you're saying, hey, we're paying 50%, you now have to pay it, they would. Does that make sense to answer your question?
Absolutely, yep. Well, it's up to you guys.
It's not one of those things like the group health insurance where the rates are gonna keep going up every year. It's probably gonna stay very steady at that $14.
Seems like a good investment, I think.
Absolutely. That's cost analysis. I mean, it's, I don't like buying extra insurance, but.
A life flight from Neely to Norfolk alone is 102,000.
They value their time in those helicopters.
I think we should add it in.
Yeah.
For that little amount of money.
Do you want to pay for the whole 14 or make the employee pay for seven?
I'd say half.
Half.
It's seven per, or 14 per month, not pay for.
14 per month. Yep.
That's not bad. I'll make a motion to pass the health insurance renewal with addition of the
MASSA.
MASSA. Insurance with the city paying for half of the bill for each employee. Seven dollars and the employee pays the other seven.
Second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Thank you, Josh.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Have a merry Christmas. Number nine, discussion, action, mayor appointments. Pool board, four-year term. Megan Bowman, Renee Wacker, both agreed to graciously serve an additional term for reappointment. You want to do them all at once or skin them in gel?
You can just do like the pool board and.
Okay.
Make a motion to appoint Megan Bowman and Renee Wacker to the four-year term on the pool board?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Tree board, two-year. Brent Muller has also agreed to be renewed and serve another term.
Make a motion to through Brent Muller to the tree board, two-year term.
Second.
Second. Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Park board, Candy Johnson graciously decided it was time to retire, asked for me to find a younger replacement, and Brandy Alexander has graciously agreed to serve. And for the park board.
Point Brandy Alexander to the park board for a three-year term.
Okay, second.
Second.
And then discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler? Number 10, discussion, action, with, sorry, discussion, action, update, resolution number, resolution number 614 should have been resolution number 618.
I gave you the wrong number last month, so.
We passed it. It just has the wrong number.
I make a motion to change resolution 614 to 618.
Second.
I'll second it.
Second. Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
I'm going to stay.
Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number 11, discussion, action, ordinance number 959, zoning change, Plainview College addition, block 23, R1 to R3. That would be where we, the proposed new four-plex is going to be built.
So we had a public hearing. It was approved. Everything is just for, legally put it on the books that it's going to be changed and added to our maps and stuff.
Make a motion to pass resolution 619.
Second.
Oh, sorry. 959, ordinance 959.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
So now, number 11.
That's an ordinance you need to proceed to wait a second, third reading if you're.
Yep, so I'm doing it now.
Make a motion to wait second and third reading.
I'll second that motion.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just let you know, too, real quick before we move on, the environment review on that piece of property has started. So we'll hopefully get it wrapped up here in the next 30 days. So if they give us the green light, then we'll go ahead and start.
Perfect. Thank you.
Number 12, discussion, action, resolution number 622, approval of lot split at 86471 538 Avenue. That is about three quarters of a mile north of Highway 20 from the state shed on the west side that you're building a house, which we'd already approved the house. Now we just had to approve this lot split.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 622 on the lot split.
Second.
I'll second that.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 13, discussion, action, appointment of city engineer and city street superintendent. City engineer Miller and Associates, city street superintendent Reed Miller, license S-4514, class A.
Miller and Associates, they were here last week, or last month. They were the ones who did the 1-6. They asked me if they really needed to come. They would have been here. I said I didn't know how people were going to be here. Get the opportunity for the public to show up. But he would have been here if need be. So if there's any questions or anything, I can answer him. That's my knowledge. So he came here last week. Kurt and I had a talk with them. They helped us fill out our need survey. They've been, so far as I've been here, they've been good to us. We haven't done any big progress with him yet, but I will be.
Make a motion to appoint Miller and Associates and the city street superintendent Reed Miller.
Second. Any discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 14, discussion, action, resolution number 619, approval of capital expenditures threshold limit.
This came from our auditors when we had our audit done in October. Currently, we had $1,000 on the books, which means they have to pull every invoice that's $1,000 or greater. $1,000 doesn't go very far anymore, so they suggested we just do 5,000 as far as capitalization for assets, just so that's all they're pulling to look at, larger invoices. Without it, they'll still keep pulling invoices that are $1,000 or greater. So this is time saver for them and for us as well. So that's just a suggestion from our auditors from October, so.
Motion passed. I'm on the right one this time. Resolution 619.
Okay, second. Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 15, discussion, action, resolution number 620, updates to emergency snow route.
This is what I brought up, which I found. Yep, it starts up and should. There you go. It's hard to see if the light's on. This is what we brought up earlier. Essentially, I brought this up just because of my mind. The original snow route didn't make sense. So here's our current one that we talked about last time, and now we're presenting it forward. I know there's some concerns because they took the school off. We don't have any concern with school. We work together. When they need snow removed, we come in and we help them however we can. So essentially, I thought it made more sense this way because it was an emergency situation for the fire hall and the hospital and manor. And I guess if there's any comments or any ideas, I mean, it's open to you guys. It's just a recommendation, so.
So you didn't go around, number four is the school, isn't it?
No, that's the manor.
Oh.
So the school was.
Oh, so you're not even getting those?
Yeah.
Like we suggested, doing the school.
I, I didn't know.
I didn't hear the part. We can surely put it on there. That's not a big deal.
I thought last meeting, that's why we kind of had brought this meeting. We kind of discussed that we wanted the school on there a little bit, didn't we? If I remember right.
The one thing I guess I never said to you is, I felt last month you thought that they had to be plowed in the order and not necessarily just because they were on the route. I guess just because they're on the route or the way they were listed, I don't think they had to necessarily be plowed in that order. That's just my thinking. I didn't say that last month. And I think that's where you were coming from because you were saying like if it snows on December 28th, why would the third street be the school?
It did say that. They had to plow in that order. It said that, yeah, it said that that was.
Because at the bottom, it said, once all the others were done, then we do the fire hall.
Yeah, so that's where, that's where it didn't make any sense. Why would we wait to do the fire hall when if there's an accident or fire, we're not going to tell the fire department, oh, hold on, I gotta clean your parking lot. We can, we can put the school back on there. We can put it at the very end, or we can put it as no order at all. I would suggest talking to Dr. O. I know the path that was on there before isn't the path that the buses took anyway, so it really didn't make much sense.
I mean, what do you, I guess, what do you think?
Well, city's been fantastic taking care of the school. I mean, I text Kurt at 5:00 AM, you know, say, late start, and he says, thank you. You know, so, and I assume Kurt has some authority and on some decision-making.
He's the man who has authority on that yet.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, yeah, if it's over Christmas break, there's no hustle to get the school done. So certainly trust the city's decisions on, you know, where, what needs to get done first, and if the school can wait, you know, it can wait. You know, if it's a Saturday, they don't need to hustle and get the school done.
We've left it without priority on the list. We've left it without priority on the list right now. They're no longer numbered. So it's discretionary on the priority, but if you want to give the school priority over all the rest of the town. And make it a snow emergency route, well, then you add it back on the list.
Yeah, and I guess that's mainly the only thing I would advocate for is, um, just because we might have a s- a snow event. And no school doesn't mean we might not have some kind of activity, uh, you know, the, the next day, even though it's a non-school day. So I, I, I would prefer to still have it be prioritized over, um, obviously, you know, many, maybe many other streets and. Those are obviously your decisions, but I, I, I wouldn't. But I, but I'm not worried about it. Honestly, you know, if, if I have to, yeah, say, hey Kurt, we do have a, uh, a youth basketball thing on Sunday. Even though we didn't have school on Friday because of a blizzard, but we're ready for that, and we'd like to have things, you know, at least Win Road or what have you. He's, uh, he's certainly been very good.
Yeah.
So I, I trust the city's judgment, so I wouldn't bark to say, I can't believe you wouldn't have the city on the emergency snow route. I. I get it, your emergency services and your routes to manor and hospital. Uh, but we should just use some discretion, uh, you know, okay, what events do we have going on and what's the calendar? Uh, and when's a regular school day, so.
Like you said, you communicate with Kurt well, so.
Yes, and if you're comfortable with that, and if he has some authority to make those decisions, and I, he, he probably should, and I assume he does. You know, I, I trust the council's decision.
Most likely, here's the thing, if, if it's that bad that they have to clean the school off for an event, they're probably not going to have the event. Because nobody else can get out of their house if it's that, that bad of an event.
Yeah, and occasionally there could be, um, you know, an event if we're hosting some type of NSA activity. Occasionally, there is a, a, a serious responsibility comes to that if we're hosting a district wrestling tournament or what have you. You know, where it's still on, even though we had a snow event. But again, I, I'd say, you know, the night before I'd say, Kurt, I hate to tell you, but gosh dang it, we got to be cleaned up by seven AM. You know, something like that, and he, he takes care of it. And his crew. So.
I think we all worked well with Kurt and Troy trying to get the snow off the sidewalks and out. Because I know he gets a phone, phone call at four AM.
Yeah. Yeah, he's already been up for an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can attest to that.
Do we have a copy of that resolution?
It will be coming down shortly.
Resolution is done based on the map. If you want to add at the bottom. You know, the streets around Silver Park and the streets around the, of the school block, that would be easily done. I mean, what you're doing is prioritizing them over. The gravel road up in the northeast part of town. I mean, I, doesn't that make some sense?
So, so if it's on emergency snow route, does that mean people can't park next to the school then?
It changes the parking rules during the snow event so that they can clean them off.
Well, that's what I'm asking. So if we have an emergency snow route and he has an event there, does that mean they all legally can't park on that street now?
Well, once it's clean, it's clean. But not until, you're going to clean early in the morning.
What does the council wish to do then for number fifteen?
I guess I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution six twenty, updates on the emergency snowing.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Tyler?
Nay.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Number sixteen. Discussion action, health board recommendation for nuisance property. One zero five South King Street, Plainview Pioneer Townsite Company, addition block ten, lot ten. And the owner is here. You wish to approach the podium and speak, or?
I don't wish to approach the podium because I can't.
Okay.
I have no problem.
I know. Can, can the council hear you from?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I had my trailers parked in a neat row, and somebody turned me in and said it wasn't good enough. And they were also trespassing on my property. They get clear up by the things that I had at by the back of the house. Is how they knew whether all was there. I'd like to know who did that. But anyway. We now have everything for sale that's back there. There are things that have left. There are things that are going to be leaving tomorrow and the next day. And that's the best I can do for now. I mean, I have a whole list of places that we have gone by that are worse than mine. Believe me, worse. But I'm just saying that I don't know why I got turned in. I really don't. But anyway. There's a lot of things that are leaving tomorrow and the next day.
So could we just table this and keep an eye on it?
It's up to you. It's completely your decision.
Come on, come on, consider it.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're willing to work with people. I mean. You know, it's. You can try and try and try, and sometimes you can only do so much.
You can either table it or give a date, or just. Bring it on next month.
I'll just have to table it and revisit it next month.
Okay.
See you next time. Revisit January?
Yeah.
Second that?
Oh, yeah, the motion I'll second.
Yeah. Um, all in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Jeremy? Not Jeremy, Tyler. I'm looking at Jeremy.
Oh, dang.
Jeremy's at the roster, okay. Okay. They're going to put it on the agenda next month and revisit it.
Okay. I couldn't agree with that.
I'm sorry, uh. Number seventeen, discussion action. Resolution number six two-three, nuisance property. One zero seven West Locust. Plainview Pacific Townsite Company, first addition. Block ten, lots sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, added twelve, three of twenty-two.
This is the rattles property. This is the one that you guys gave me time, and we're going to revisit it in December. We're just back up on the plate. Have you guys taken a look at what did or didn't get done?
I forgot to ask you that night after, or the day after the health board meeting, I saw the fire chief and the. State electrical inspector there, but I didn't know what all was going. When I called NCPPD, he said that that's what was going to happen, but I didn't know what the determination was.
This is for the stuff behind his house.
Oh, okay.
For a public hearing. Um, this is what he presented, and you guys said we'll give you an, kind of like we're doing this here.
Yep, yep.
We'll give him another chance, and then now we're revisiting the situation.
According to you, Dad, this one down as a resolution, so I've got a resolution out for you. I mean, the, the motion was to extend it to December first and revisit the question.
Right.
I modified the resolution to say if you're going to pass it, and that's your call. But it now says. The cleanups will be as of the effective date of this resolution. I mean, your motion was. To get it cleaned up by the first of December, but we're already passed that way. I still don't think we can be passing resolutions that said you have to have this done last week. That's not how that works.
Right.
It's got to be, it's got to be done now, or it's got to be done at the effective date of the resolution. But you've already essentially established you're right around the first of December deadline. So if, if you want to get it to the point of enforcement, this is what you need to do.
So I have a reminder, this is, nothing been.
I don't know, it looked, I thought it looked pretty straightened up. I mean. He had his camper there and log splitter, and, I mean, everything looked like it was pretty well cleaned up. He had trailer bowl brushed and everything.
Was the, uh, tab of the tractor still on the ground?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, they had problems with some bolts or something. I, they had.
Because I knew David had offered to help him, but I didn't know what the.
Yeah.
Answer was to that, so.
I can't honestly say because I don't live by there either. I, yeah.
Well, if you're not certain where you're at, you can table it again and keep watching, but I, that's entirely up to you guys. That's.
Yeah, the thing with this property, it's going to be really difficult to deal with. I mean, it's, I don't know. I'm not quite sure what we can do either because. When Jeff was there, we had a discussion and, you know, he's. He's on one side and we're on the other, and. I don't know.
Is there even windows in that house, or is it just plastic on those windows?
That's why we met again for the other issue.
See, we, the health board discussed the whole other side of it, the living conditions. And so this, you know, was done by us months ago. This is from the outside of that. We're trying to get piles and stuff cleaned up. You know, and it's. Uh, we still got a bunch of stuff back there. But I don't know. I see him working on the house. I see him carrying sheetrock around. I don't. I think they don't have much money.
Well, there's no point in passing the resolution unless you're going to do something now.
Yeah.
If you're not going to do something now, I think you need to table it again, but then you've got to decide how you want to proceed.
I think we should table first one.
Is that the first and a second again then?
Sure.
Keep a watch on it, I guess, and. I don't know if there's some kind of help we can give him. I'm not sure how to.
I don't think he'll accept much help, I don't.
Yeah, I know. It's a tough situation, for sure.
Motion by Bob, second by Pam, to table it till next month to revisit. Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, back to item number twenty-one. Discussion action, LB eight forty recommendation. Nebraska student loan forgiveness program. Seven thousand five hundred dollars per year, up to three years, Ashley Dendy, 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 Plainview Family Pharmacy.
I didn't have Scott or Ashley come tonight. I didn't know what the COVID rules.
She's back there.
Oh, is she here? Oh.
She just piled back there.
Send reminders, but I love. Okay. Do you want?
If she wants one of those, it's up to you. You've been patiently waiting back.
Um, what this is, is it's a program through the state. Um, you can also qualify federally as well. And Pierce County falls into both of the need categories, both for the state and federal. With me working and owning a business in a high need county of the state, I qualify for this repayment grant. Um, it is a fifty-fifty match program. Up to thirty thousand dollars a year until the student loan is forgiven. As people know, a doctorate degree is not cheap, and. Um, I've been paying on it for quite some time.
I won't ask you how many years.
A while.
A while.
And, um. Basically, how the program works is, um, if you can find a community organization. To match the state's funding, then you qualify. It is an application process. So I would have to apply. We're discussing that we would put the funds, um, through, using funds through LB eight forty. Filtering those through the Plainview Pride program. And, um, yeah, am I missing anything?
Um, so the program, basically what they typically ask is there's a fifteen thousand dollar match put up by the community. And then the state matches that with fifteen thousand. That's how you get to thirty thousand forgiveness per year. Um, in our situation, LB eight forty is only going to put up half of that fifteen thousand, so seventy-five hundred. Ashley's going to put in the other seventy-five hundred. Um, so that would give to the fifteen thousand that we run through the nonprofit, Plainview Pride. Um, so she can realize that thirty thousand dollar loan forgiveness. Now, obviously, that's minus the seventy-five hundred she had to put in, so. A little bit less benefit for her, but, um, we didn't, we couldn't ever meet with the hospital foundation to kind of see if they would be willing to help, so after. Six months of trying, I think we just moved forward with LB eight forty. Um, LB eight forty, one of the things that you can use it for is a talent attraction and retention. So this is right at the alley for one of those things. The city of Neely does this with their dentist. Um, they run LB eight forty money through to help pay. Their dentist's student loans, so it's not unheard of. Other communities do do it. LB eight forty thought it was great. Um, again, I spoke a little bit in my report, the application process can sometimes. Hopefully not, but sometimes they go up to two years. So Ashley doesn't have that much longer on her loans, I don't think.
Oh, I've got a while yet.
So, you know, it would, it might not be something that happens right away. Um, so. You know, it could be, we may not realize the full twenty-one thousand out of LB eight forty, but we may as well, so. Um, but they were committed to it. Um, they, they recommended it, so it's now before you. And it was difficult to find Ashley, just so you know.
Yeah.
It's a two-year search.
But I say obviously, this is what the money's, or what the program's for.
Right.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I.
Recruit and retain.
I don't see anything, especially with LB eight forty's recommendation, so. I'll make a motion to. To LB eight forty. With LB eight forty's recommendations, the Nebraska student loan forgiveness program for Ashley. Seventy-five hundred per year, three years.
Second? Second. Any further discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, and again, thank you for.
Thank you, guys, and I just want to say it's been, it's been a year already, if you can believe that, and it's been a pleasure being in this community. You guys have. You guys have all welcomed me with open arms, and, and I really appreciate that because you guys don't know me from Adam, so.
And we know, we know how a Catholic school, but if you ever do want to move. Commute when it's bad road.
Well, if you guys can find a job for my husband, that would definitely, uh, move things along, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
Yeah.
Number twenty-two, discussion action, LB eight forty recommendation. RDVG and IRP loans for Mary's Restaurant in the amount of eighty-one thousand dollars. RDVG for twenty-five thousand. IRP for thirty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy.
Yeah, so actually, the total project cost is eighty-one thousand. Um, we've asked the business owner to put in the twenty-three percent match that LB eight forty would typically do. Um, just to have them skin in the game. Obviously, you know, we are glad to have Scott here at Mary's Restaurant, but we did give him an LB eight forty loan to get started. Um, we also did the loan for, um, during the disaster of COVID in April for all of the business owners, and he received that as well, so. Um, we thought that, uh, it wouldn't be out of the ordinary to ask him to put that twenty-three percent down, so. It didn't have to come out of LB eight forty this time, and he did agree to do that, so. The actual loan amount that we're going to do out of the RDVG and IRP is sixty-two thousand four seventy. Um, the reason you see the split is the RDVG can only go to twenty-five thousand per loan. While the IRP can go up to a hundred thousand, but they only will each do fifty percent of a project, so that's why you see the split. The LB eight forty board met with Scott and Jody, um, obviously. Got to have a restaurant. Scott's doing a great job. Mary's has been around for a while. Um, they definitely recommend seeing this through, so they put it before you. The loans, the discussion, the LB eight forty minutes were in your packets, so you, there's a little bit more in-depth there. If you want to get into the interest rates and the loan term and all of that, that's in your LB eight forty packet.
Can I just say on behalf of the Legion, that all the rent that he had paid up to last year went towards purchase, so. This eighty-one thousand is what was left off of the sell price. So he's had invested interest in make sure he finishes this.
Yeah.
I don't see any issues with it, I. If you guys do or not. Trying to make this one motion, uh, I make a motion. Pass the recommendation RDVG and the IRP loans for Mary's Restaurant. To purchase from the American Legion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any further discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Nay.
Hello?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Are you getting on? Okay. Number 23, discussion, water rate increases.
Okay, so we will start off with before we, we showed our budget, our hypothetical budget starting off with last month. Um, we did not know what the mystery bond payment would be essentially at the time, hypothetically, if we went through the entire bond process and everything. Here's just paper showing from a bond company showing you what the pays would be for total principal interest per, per annual year. So starting off, you know, 56,000, and this is for a million dollar bond for 20 years. Uh, this is just to show you where, where those costs would be at if we had to bond it out. Now granted, there's USDA things out there. There's, you know, other things we have to do or could do, but there are no guarantees. Uh, the, the engineer will help us through those things and we'll get to that time, but this is just to show you where we're starting off. And then now we're back here. We're here for typical bill survey. We're at, and there is, that's essentially a $32 fee, and yes, it went up because now we have our final numbers and I'll show you here where that came from. So this is the exact same budget we showed last month, except for now it has the month, or annual payment in here. As you can see, is that $57,000. So then here we go down. So here you can go with the rates proposed there for the $32, uh, service charge fee, $2,000 gallons. At the end of the, at the end of the budget year, we'd only be, you know, $2,000 to the good essentially. So we're, it's essentially, it's a break even issue. I'm hoping any questions, comments, solutions, uh, other ways? We didn't make this an ordinance or anything. We wanted to make sure that everybody has time to think about it. Uh, nobody did come in really and have any better alternatives, unfortunately. I wish they would have, but we're kind of in predicament. We know where we're at. We know why we're kind of here and. So I guess everybody wants to see, see anything out of here, collect anything out of here. Except most of this one, we went all through last month, so.
The, uh, 57,000 was.
No, but.
57,000, Jeremy, what was that for?
That would be a bond payment to pay for the, a new well. Yep, that, that's, the first page I showed you was the, the scale of the annual bond payments.
I think I gave you guys.
Yeah, yeah, you guys all have copies in your packets about it. But this is for the public to see, to see what's going on, um.
Bond payment business would be after a new well and after the bond's issued. You're talking about a year or two.
Yep, yep. It'd be, it'd be essentially a year, yeah. Uh, we're actually, I talked to the engineer today about the process and how everything's going. He plans on being here probably January or February, depending on how the, the studies are, they went for the ocopher, and those are the questions that we can really get into if we need to. Uh, he doesn't truly believe that, uh, we'll be, his full motion sits till April will be when all of the tests, the firm test results are back and they believe they can presume a good solid well location for what they do. But those will be the processes that he'll bring forward, January and February. And then later on, as we get further into it, he can talk about the options that we already have. We talked about them today, but as he said, it's all applying to the government. I'm sure Susan can help out. She knows some of those grants and things we can have. Um, I mean, there's things out there for, you know, loan forgiveness part of it, but, uh, essentially, this is assuming that it doesn't happen. This is where we're at. No questions or anything? We can ponder on it. We can, we can bring it forward next month for an ordinance. We can, um, look at different options. I mean, I'm, I'm here for.
We have a choice to not have a resolution passed here soon.
I thought, I mean, you can't keep. Can't keep you either sitting on it. It's going to happen.
Well, yeah, it's going to happen.
Uh, they, they did say another option. He said essentially what goes on Northeast Nebraska now is you're, you're going to go out farther and farther to get water. He says not unheard of for towns to go five, seven, eight miles anymore for well water. And he says essentially the best thing you can do is find a big enough area away from the nitrate instead of just a small pocket. And all you're doing is running away from a treatment plant. And he said, uh, as soon as you get into those, he said those get real costly, so.
He recommended an 80% increase.
I'm actually recommending more now that we got the amortization on, on the service fee. That's, that's right.
You know, we have a lot of elderly people in this town and they're on fixed income. And they don't even get enough to make a difference.
Trash rate went up three bucks. It wasn't fun.
Yeah, yeah.
That was an imp, that was a bill to do.
Yeah, well, that'll be, uh, who knows about trash rates after our new contracts come in and we open bids up, yeah.
But the way we're going with our funds.
Yeah.
We have.
Yep. We understand that people are on fixed incomes, but if we, if we don't do anything, uh, we're just, we'll just go on the hole and we'll be done. I mean, we'll have people come in and tell us what our rates are.
I think you have to think about too that, you know, we can't rely on grants either to fund this because in the city of Plainview, especially if we're talking, USDA is really the only grant entity that would do clean drinking water, this sort of situation. And they look at low to moderate income scales to really base those grants off of, and we do not meet that scale. We're too high. So the best thing that the USDA can do is they may be able to grant a, a quarter of it, maybe, if we could do an income survey and really tweak those numbers. But the other program that they have that works, it's, they do 1% interest loans for like 40 years. But you still have to make that 1% interest payment every year. It's got to come from somewhere. That is honestly your best bet in the grant world. There's nothing else out there, um, for this sort of thing unless the federal government comes up with something new, but.
And if you look at, if you look at this scale, yeah, essentially we're at, uh, one and a half is our average across the entire of this one, so we're not much far. We're, I mean, the numbers aren't going to be skewed too far off, even if best case scenario.
Right. Yeah, and if you were to get a quarter, a quarter of the cost in a grant, you'd be real lucky and I don't see it happening. We're just, we're, we're riding this line of load. We're like within percentages, but we ride the line, so.
I guess if there's no, I mean, all, I can bring it forward in January unless somebody has a better solution, I'm all, I'm all yours.
I'm going to say bring it forward in January and if somebody else has a better solution by then, great.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Is this the number 24, city attorney comment?
I don't have anything we haven't already covered.
Number 25, council comments. Bob?
I'd just like to welcome Brian as a counsel.
Thank you.
And welcome Tyler back. I'm staying with how we're looking at it and I'm just looking forward to working with everybody and keeping the city going and keeping things moving forward. So thanks for running and being a part of the city.
Brian?
I don't have anything.
Pam?
No.
Tyler? Look forward to the next four years. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas, we're done.